This evening, there was a special called meeting by the Vice Mayor and it is to be held. I was not in agreeance with the special call meeting and at this time, I'm going to turn the gavel over to the Vice Mayor to hold his special called meeting.
Just for public knowledge, I don't think we're even going to hold that special meeting. We were just going to add those agendas to the next agenda when we start our regular meeting. So, it was my knowledge that the, when I asked for the meeting to be called, that we at that time had decided not to call the meeting based on some of the things that the Mayor had discussed with us. And then I was told that the Public Safety Committee met yesterday and they want to put their stuff on the agenda tonight to give to us. So, that's what we're going to do.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
If it passes. We need to open and close the meeting.
Yes, sir. It was an answer from Lee Doltman closing.
Call the special meeting to order at 6:55, 57 and call it to close.
Good evening. I call your attention to the Board of Commissioners' meeting, November 21st, 2013, at 7:00 PM. Those who would, please join us in the prayer and the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you today for all of the gifts and all of the blessings that you've shined upon us in our community of Fairview. Lord bless our efforts this evening as we go forward with the business, that we keep the citizens at mind, and that all decisions are made. Lord, thank you for the ways that you have shown us that we are a community, that we pitch in together, and that we are true volunteers. Lord, we thank you for the season that we're going into, for the Thanksgiving, that we'll all look at the things that we are thankful for and count our many blessings, one by one. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Next item is the approval of the agenda. What are the wishes of the board?
Before we approve, the Public Safety Committee would like to add an agenda item, discuss and/or take action on the bids for the cameras and computers for the post people.
Second.
Any other additions?
Or do you want to add that, Mr. Commissioner?
I guess that would be under Old Business F. Already processed.
That's correct.
7B. Any other additions or deletions?
I'd like to add discussion or take action on the appointment of a committee to review the Codes Department.
That would be New Business C.
New Business F. Discuss and/or take action on a committee to review Codes?
All Codes, yes.
Or Codes Department?
Codes.
Any other additions or deletions this evening?
Mayor, I believe the, we had another email yesterday with Bill Number 2013-27, Ordinance 822, the property maintenance regs. I believe they wanted that added as well. Is that correct, Teresa?
Yes.
That would be New Business C.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, G.
G.
Would that be the Tree Bank ordinance that was sent yesterday? Is that correct? Ordinance 822, that was sent. New Business G. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three, citizens' comments. We have one this evening. Mr. John Cherry, would you please approach the podium? Welcome. You have three minutes to share or deliver your comments or questions.
Thank you very much. I would like to just make an announcement for the Chamber of Commerce. I have Nancy, you're here with us, so you can join me if you'd like. We are, some of you may not or may know that we are moving our offices to the Publix Works Building. I've been talking with our city manager, Wayne Hall. He's asked, they've hired some people or another person that's going to be working in the counter up here. And so, there's a, some offices that are available to us there. It's actually a larger space and we'll be able to share the conference table that's in there. And there's also a future office in there for us to use if we have a, if we're able to get a full-time executive director of the chamber, if the board sees fit to, you know, fully fund our chamber. Now, one of the situations we have with that situation, now we're going to move tomorrow, if AT&amp;T can move the phone line tomorrow, which I believe is going to happen. We have signage that points towards the Chamber of Commerce right now, out here in front of the City Hall. We won't have any signage out there. Now, you already have a Publix Works Building and a fire hall on Bowie Lake Road that doesn't have any signage at all. And I was talking to the city manager about perhaps we could all have a sign together there. I mean, we appreciate having, not having rent and utilities for the chamber, but if we could have some signage directing out on the Highway 100, directing people that, you know, that come into town, newcomers and whatnot, that could find the Chamber of Commerce and that we won't be left in obscurity out here, we would really appreciate that. Our budget, our annual budget's around $22,000 and I think we raised about that much money this year. We spend nearly all of our time raising money. And our chamber duties are, really should go beyond fundraising. And a city our size should be funding its chamber. We are a partner with the city. We're the face of the city. And I've come up here before, again and again and again, in beating this drum. And White House Tennessee's a city about the size of Fairview with a similar-sized budget. And they provide their chamber with about $24,000 to $25,000 a year. And they do similar-type fundraising activities that we do. And they have a full-time director and they are open during business hours, which we're not able to do because we can only afford a part-time employee. So, I ask you again, please, can we do something to make us the partner that we are and show the commitment from this board and to set a good example for future boards, that we can be a yearly annual budget, in-year budget for the Chamber of Commerce? I appreciate it if y'all would consider that.
Just a couple of questions. I had mentioned to the city manager, Wayne Hall, about signage up there. I believe you indicated to me that shouldn't be a problem.
As far as the signage out there, it doesn't seem to be a problem.
Shouldn't be a problem at all for us to help get something out there for you. We've got stuff up here already, so.
We can't afford to pay for a sign. I mean, I know what a sign would cost. I've seen what other people are spending on signs.
Well, it's not going to be an LED sign. It's going to be.
No, we don't want one of those, so.
He'll work something up for it, I'm sure. Another question for you. I know that you had an attorney that looked into, we don't, we don't get any of the hotel motel taxes from the county. Am I correct?
That is correct. Williamson County receives about, last year received $3.2 million in hotel motel taxes and Fairview got nothing of that. Now, we had an attorney look into this and there's nothing restricting the city from receiving their fair share. We are the fifth-largest city in Williamson County and we should, by that standard, by that measurement, we should be receiving one-fifth of that $3.2 million. And that would be a great way to fund our chamber.
I'm sure it'd be based on population rather than.
Well, I'm basing that on property taxes. We are larger than Thompson Station based on property taxes.
Well, I agree with you 100 percent. I'd like to see us sharing those funds too because after all, it comes from everywhere, all over, and it goes into the county fund. It should be distributed forward. And I think they furnish about $300,000, and I might be way off on this, about $300,000 toward the county Chamber of Commerce, which is Spring Hill, Franklin, and Brentwood. No, Spring Hill, I'm sorry.
Coos Springs.
Coos Springs.
Well, this is how White House gets their money. And they get it.
Does Rutherford County already do that?
I didn't look at Rutherford County because they're, you know, we found a city that was similar to our size and they do it through their industrial board. But if the political will is there, you know, in our county commission, it can be done. And, you know, maybe it takes our, you know, our constituency from this district going to those county meetings. You know, they have unusual schedules, like on Mondays at 5:00, you know, which is an odd time to have them. So, anyway, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your commitment. Next on the agenda is awards and recognitions. We have a few recognitions this evening. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor. Over to Commissioners. First off, I'd like to introduce the three new employees. We have two that's leaving and one that we've got the new, that y'all voted on for the new position last meeting. First off, I'd like to thank Teresa and Crystal for how much they've meant to me and how much of a rock they've been for me. Just they've answered everything that is, I've asked of them or any direction that I needed to go. They've just been wonderful to me.
Thank you.
First off, the new CFO is Tom Dartie. If you would, please stand up, Tom.
Welcome.
The new city recorder is Brandy Johnson.
Welcome.
And our new finance clerk, Susan Cox. The next item, there's two more. First off, I'd like Chief Cooper to come up. They responded to the hazardous material, bad wreck on 840 and I-40. And his men did a great job out there. It was a very dangerous thing and I'd like Chief Cooper to come up and recognize his people.
Let me have him fall in for you first. There's a, there's a passel of them.
Gunny.
Who's driving the fire truck?
We brought him with us.
Hey, come on up here, Chief. Chief, just let him come on up here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on around, Gunny. How's the twin, or how's the triplets, Gunny?
Doing fine. I'm celebrating your second birthday.
All right.
Yay.
Where they go to college?
As it happens on the interstates, once in a while, you have these wrecks. We had one, it was actually in Dixon County at I-40 and 840 at the intersection involving 18-wheelers, multiple 18-wheelers, including hazardous materials, a carrier. There was a fire, there was a death, it was a fatality wreck. And the barrels of hazardous materials were exploding, skyrocketing hundreds of feet and then setting the fields on fire when they hit the ground. It was a multi-agency response and we participated, of course. I'm going to tell you a little bit more of that a little later under another presentation, but tonight, we have drill and we have the people that participated in that. Gunny, would you introduce your people?
The primary players who went up to Dixon County with us was Cody May, lead firefighter, Scott Hughes, Chad Hara, and Adam Lynn. And in addition to that, Jerry Meneer, who was in the field this evening, was the primary response, took part in it. And we were able to do that because of having all the other volunteers who were able to come in and help cover the city while the other firefighters were responding with the city and towns. And doing fine.
Nancy, take a photograph.
Take it.
Won't you jump in the line and let Nancy take a photograph?
I will. And before I get away from the mic, let me address the audience. We have career people who do this for a living. We have volunteers that do it for free. If you look up this, down this line, you can't tell who is who because they're all trained identically. And that's how we run the fire department. A firefighter is a firefighter.
Thank you. Thank you for your dedication, sir. Y'all scooch in and if the Commissioners will stand, maybe we'll.
Can you stand, sir? I'm sorry to make you stand, but.
Work there.
He doesn't know. He doesn't see me. What about flash?
Teresa, anyway, you can knock that mic down real quick. That mic is going down. Thanks, Gunny. It's 98,000 yards. Excellent. Thank you, guys.
We have one. Oh, you're still.
I got one more. Sergeant Connor, could you come forward, please? Let me set the stage on what happens to us when they close I-40. And in this case, they also closed 840. All the traffic gets off on 100. When the 18-wheelers start backing off on 100, we can't get through the traffic. We come out of that fire station, now that we have the three-lane, if I've got to go to the schools or to Sleepy Hollow or anything else like that, I've got to go up Chester, come back Cumberland, cut through the schools, King Road, or if it's on this side, we've got to go the three-lane Cox Pike, Old Franklin, Dice Lampley, Crowcut, Walker, things like that, to get out that way because the 18-wheelers can't park for us, if you would. This is the first incident I recall where they've closed both 840 and I-40 and made everybody get off on 100. Fortunately, I talked to the incident commander, he did not close the westbound. Had he done that, everybody got off on 96 and we've been paralyzed. However, they did have both exits of 840 as you go toward Dixon close because of the smoke was toxic. Everybody was coming south on 840, getting off on 100. Once it backed up to Dixon, they were coming down 46 and coming in 100. We complicated things. The nearest fire hydrant was on 100 at the county line. So, we had one lane blocked in that bumper-to-bumper traffic. The police reacted very quickly by calling in off-duty people. Come on, don't hide over there, Sarge. Come on over here. Sergeant Connor was in charge of the intersection, 840 and 100. When we got out there first, it was a nightmare. Everybody was just trying to go everywhere because they were getting off on 840, trying to get right back on. And they couldn't go anywhere then. He was in charge and I was in a little bit state of a panic because I thought they were going to close the westbound lanes and we were, again, one of our paralysations. When Sergeant Connor took place, he called in some more help. He got an officer to go out there where we were filming at the hydrant, called in T-Dot, got the green help trucks out there with the T-Dot crews. I came back about an hour later with a big box of Gatorade and everything was running smooth. Okay? I was really worried we were going to get tied up like we do in the past. So, my hat's off, Sergeant Connor. Great job.
Great job.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all taking care of us. City Manager, you have something else?
Yes. We just got through with haunted forests and Keith and the dedication of the people that helped are here tonight. I'd like for y'all to honor them tonight for the hard work they put in. Also, the JROTC is here and you will be presenting them with a check.
Okay.
And I know they will like that. So, if Keith would come on up and introduce his people.
Hopefully, I forget nobody's name here. Park staff, Jenny Herrera, Nancy Carter, Brian Bissell, Justin Tomlin, Mr. Alan Bissell, Chase Greer. Street Department.
Are they here, Keith? I'm sorry. Are they here?
Why don't you just come up here like this? Just have them come on up here.
Not all of them are here.
Okay.
And I don't have the street department people here because they were here for the last event, but I will name them. Zane Greer, Nick Green, Todd Bratcher, Blake Ears, and Randy Beck. I want to thank the police department for all their help in our events out there. Ms. Crystal Pullet, tree supporter. JROTC, we had 23 volunteers there and we'll have them come up for that check as soon as I can get the rest of these to come up. Mr. Jerry Carey, Talia Barr, Landon Tuttle, my mother-in-law, Jancy O'Dell, Jason Lane, and Jeremy Jackson, and my wife, Andrea Paisley.
Excellent job. And on behalf of the city of Fairview, Mr. Nick Hoffman.
Yes, sir.
I have something to present to the JROTC. If you'll come and take this for them, it's a check of appreciation from the city of Fairview, from the Park Department and the Street Department for all JROTC's hard work, but they also help us all through the year. So, you please send them that we said thank you and we sure appreciate all their commitment. Thank you. As I said before, we're a great volunteer state. I do appreciate everyone volunteering, appreciate everyone doing what they can to make Fairview the best place to live, work, and play. Will there be any other awards or recognition this evening? Staff or the board?
Mayor, I'd like to introduce somebody if I can. Couple of, the last meeting, we had a person here that was going to be running for our general session seat. And I'm impressed any time that somebody is going to come to Fairview and going to be serving such an important role, that everybody gets a chance to meet them like we did the other day. And anybody in the future, we'd be glad to introduce them too. We have with us tonight Attorney Lee Dryer. Lee, you'll stand up just a second. I've known Lee for quite some time. He was a district attorney for about seven years, am I right, Lee? He has, is now in the private law practice as a defense attorney. And I believe the figure you gave me was approximately 1,000 cases down here since the period of time that you've done. So, he's quite familiar with the courts, a lot of the people here. And it's, your election is next August?
Yes, sir.
Next August. So, I'm sure he'll be out knocking on everybody's doors and meeting and greeting and everything. And we're just glad to have interest in people to come here and fill Tom Taylor's seat. I've seen Tom again tonight and he keeps telling me he's not, he's not going to run down here again. So, thank you, Lee, for coming out and look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. Any other awards or recognitions this evening? Be none other, we'll move on. Item five on the agenda is the public announcements.
Mayor, I have one, the emissions testing Monday and Tuesday from 7:30 to 12:00. And I believe our football team is playing tomorrow night at CPA and we would like all the support we can get.
That's, I believe that's 1,800 Foster Avenue in Nashville. I'm pretty sure that's what it is, the address for it.
Okay. Any other public announcements this evening? Upcoming events?
No. I don't, I don't see the item.
Okay. Next item is the item six, approval of the minutes, the minutes for October 8th, 2013, Board of Commissioners' special call meeting.
Motion approved.
We have a first and second. Any discussion? This is October 8th, 2013. Be no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6B, the minutes for the October 8th, 2013, Board of Commissioners' special called meeting, number two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'd like to address on the second to last page, if it's a typo, or second to last page midway down. And it's when I and Commissioner Bissell requested that Crystal read. Ms. Pullet stated the requirements for city manager and, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. In the 14th line, if I counted correctly, it says a bachelor degree in any public administration and a minimum of five years. Is that correct or is it a typo? It is correct.
Or any.
Well, the minutes read, "and a minimum of."
Should say "and."
My question is, is it a typo?
It should say "and" and then at the end of it, it should say "or any equivalent," or any combination.
Or any. All right? Any other corrections, deletions, or additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that correction. Clarification. 7A, discuss and/or take action, city projects. I'll share with you that we had a city project workshop at 5:30 to 6:45. In that discussion, the staff and the commission discussed the project list that is currently for Fairview. Several of those are moving along very well. We have some that need additional discussion and then some that are in the state phase. So, in that, were there any discussions or any comments that the board or the staff would like to make under this agenda item? Okay. Nothing to present for action at this time. Item 7B, discuss and/or take action on bids for in-car cameras. Safety Committee presents.
Yes, ma'am. On behalf of the Safety Committee, I'd like to recognize Captain Mark Sutton and to discuss the opening of the bids. The committee did meet on Tuesday afternoon, go over the bid packages as presented, and endorse the recommendation that Captain Sutton is going to give.
I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sissy Taylor, her RIT director, if she can get more of the technical side of it for you.
Can I say, this is for the cameras and computers or just cameras?
Yes, this will be for both bids.
Okay, so we'll make that clear.
There was four companies that actually bid, two of which were, did not meet the specs, so they were not looked at. And so, for the Visual Pro 360s One Company and ARC, both meet, met the specs for both the cameras and the computers. And we put them together because the way that the package works, the cameras and the computers work together, therefore, we did not want two separate companies for the installation process. And the ARC ended up coming in as the lowest bid for the overall package. And that included the in-car cameras, the in-car computers, the training of our personnel for installation for the future. And they came in as a total of $106,270.69.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
And is this the same that y'all recommended last time?
Yeah, this is the system that we already have the infrastructure for. That was the reason why the other two did not meet the specs. They were not compatible with that system.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Sissy, but I believe it was like seven years that this, we expect that this will be current.
Yes, that we'll be able to keep this server, keep this system running.
And we'll be able to do in-house training on it, correct?
Yes. So, after we make this initial purchase, then we will have staff that are trained to install the cameras and I will be able to hook everything up with the servers and do the software side of the installations.
Rather than I have to outside.
Right.
And this money is budgeted from where, Ms. Sissy?
This is part of the vehicle package.
The money's coming from, the $106,000 is being paid from what?
That would be part of the vehicle package that we're looking at for the Highland public.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Thank you very much. I appreciate y'all's presentation. Item 8A, discuss and/or take action on Bill 2013-25.
Ordinance Number 820 is an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Old Nashville Road, owned by Timothy R. Mangrum and wife Jessica Mangrum. It's sewn on the Fairview geological.
do the software side of the installations.
Rather than I have to outside.
Right.
Okay.
And this money is budgeted from where, Ms. Sissy?
This is part of the vehicle package.
The money's coming from, the $106,000 is being paid from what?
That would be part of the vehicle package that we're looking at for the Highland public.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Thank you very much, I appreciate your presentation. Item eight A, discuss and/or take action on Bill 2013-25.
Ordinance number 820 is an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the City of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Old Nashville Road, owned by Timothy R. Mangrum and wife Jessica Mangrum. Is shown on the Fairview Geological Listen of Assessment Roll Map 42, parcel 65.12, 1.03 acres, from RM 12 to RS 10. Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome, sir. Eight B, discuss and/or take action on Resolution 21-13.
It's a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on the changing of zoning of certain property in the City of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Old Nashville Road, owned by Timothy R. Mangrum and wife Jessica Mangrum. Is shown on the Fairview Geological Listen of Assessment Roll Map 42, parcel 65.12, 1.03 acres, from RM 12 to RS 10. Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd like the record to show on the next items, eight C and eight D, I have personal interest in the property, and I will be turning the meeting over to Vice Mayor Johnson, and I will be recruiting myself for any discussion and any voting.
Item eight C, bill number 2013-26, ordinance number 821, is an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the City of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Horn Tavern Road, owned by Walter C. Totti and wife Beverly D. Totti. Is shown on the Fairview Geological Listen of Assessment Roll Map 22, parcel 133, 8.37 acres, from RS 40 to R 20. Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion of seconds, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eight D's, Resolution 22-13, is a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on the change of zoning of certain property in the City of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Horn Tavern Road, owned by Walter C. Totti and wife Beverly D. Totti. Is shown on the Fairview Geological Listen of Assessment Roll Map 22, parcel 133, 8.37 acres, from R 40 to R 20. Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item E, discuss and/or take action on Justice for Bomber Benefit Ride. Park Director, Ms. Jenny?
I'm sorry. No, you got a raise this week, you don't know it. Got a promotion. Surprise!
So, the Justice for Bomber Benefit Ride is now a walk, for logistical reasons, actually. I have Debbie Humphrey here to discuss more detail and be able to answer your questions about what they're proposing at the park.
So, are we still going to need a corral? Not sure.
Welcome, Ms. Humphrey.
Hi. I'm in front of the board tonight in behalf of Terry and Barbara McElvein, who are here tonight. They are the owners of the horse that was killed on their property over on Crow Cut Road. And so what we'd like to do is raise money to increase the reward monies, so that perhaps it will encourage someone to come forward who might be hesitant to do that. I have a couple of points that I'd like you to consider, and if you have any questions. One of them is that it isn't a horse ride, which we would have preferred that, but that's not in the cards right now. Just a simple walk, not a race or anything like that, just a walk of a group of people. And we'd like to have a donation table where the walkers could come up and donate, and then sign their waiver to walk in the group. And before the walk begins, we'd like to have a horse owner or two come and express their love of their horse and how it impacted their life, and it's a part of their family. After the group walks, they would walk on predetermined trail route. We're thinking Lob-Lolly, start and stop at the same location. And the funds that are raised, if there is no reward ever given out, it would be given to a 401(c)(3) charitable equine program, such as the Volunteer Equine Advocates, who are in Gallantown. There are maybe some other ones that the McElveins may want to consider, I haven't discussed that with them. We'd ask that the board would consider waiving the fees that are involved with the walk, and that they would consider waiving the requirement for insurance. And if this is approved, could the walk possibly be noted on the park entry sign?
When do y'all plan to do this, Ms. Humphrey?
We, on the application, we just threw a date, it's a Saturday, we thought maybe December 7th might be available.
That's the Chris.
I saw there was something up on the sign.
It'll be over afternoon, if that helps you.
Yeah.
Maybe we can make the times different, then, if that.
Yeah, just, we're all people in town, so maybe a good day. I don't have any problem with waiving the fees on it myself, and I'm not speaking for everybody else, but Larry, what about the waiving of the insurance?
This is not a city function, and what I would recommend, if the board wants to do this, if they're not going to require the entity that's putting this on for, what of a, do you have a name of the entity?
Well, the account that's set up at the bank is Justice for Bomber, which is the horse's name.
All right, if the, if the board doesn't want, if they want to waive the requirement that they have insurance, I would have no problem with it provided our city manager checks with TML and makes sure that our insurance covers the city. Because the city, as I understand this, the city would not be an active participant in this. The city's not putting it on, and the insurance would be, actually, a claim that would be filed there, its own city property, would be filed probably jointly against them and the city. But I would want to be sure, before you waive the requirement that they have any type of insurance, that the city manager checks with TML and gets an assurance from them that our insurance would cover that. I think it will, but I'd just like, we'd need that before, I would recommend that the board do that.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the fee for using the park.
Thank you, sure.
And that upon condition of agreement from TML that we waive the fee for the insurance.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion?
Have we ever waived the fee for the insurance, even for the Chamber of Commerce to have Nature Fest? You have it every time, don't you?
Ms. Jenny, do you have any recollection in your time here with the City of Fairview of other times we've waived the insurance, and if so, what type of entity was that done for? Oh, Keith, anyone? Either one?
I have not either, and I won't support it.
If we can't, we can't.
Well, I mean, I just feel like that we're really going to set ourselves up for a lot of trouble. So I'd say, as far, I mean, I can understand waiving the fee, but as far as insurance, that's probably not a wise idea for us.
If I could, then I would withdraw the motion for waiving the insurance at this time. It's very nominal, much slower than what you think.
I want the board to be sure, I'm not recommending that you waive the insurance, I'm just saying if you're going to consider that, that you not even consider that unless you have, the TML will cover the city. Now, as far as the actual waiving of the insurance, I don't think it's a good idea to be setting a precedence that I don't believe you need to go there. And I'm certainly not advocating that, I'm not an advocate for any of it, I'm just saying that I would be an advocate against it if TML wouldn't cover it, because then the city would be on its own.
Well, as motion stands down, we've withdrawn that part of it.
Okay.
Is the second been withdrawn?
Yes, but I do have a question, so I'm kind of reluctant to withdraw the second.
Discussion?
Because then I can't talk. If the city becomes a sponsor, a cosponsor, does the waiver of the insurance go away? There's no need to waive the insurance because we're a cosponsor?
If you're doing that, and it's, and it's a city function, but I still, if the city's not going to put this on, you know, if anything happens, they're going, and anybody, when anyone is hurt, everybody who's out there is going to be sued. And you'd probably be doing them a disservice by not requiring it, because as the entity that puts it on is going to get sued, and if it's on the city property, the city's going to get sued. And you'd probably be doing them a disservice because the Torque Claims Liability Act applies to the city and does not apply to the entity.
I will check into.
Just get with me after the meeting and.
Yes, sir.
Work with you.
Great.
Do we have a withdrawal?
A withdrawal.
We have a first and a second that's withdrawn, would there like to be another motion?
Motion to waive the fee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have we have voted on?
Yeah, we got a vote on it.
First and second, we have. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And do understand that we are very, very, very regretful that this has happened, and that we do wish that someone is found, and that justice is found for Bomber. And as far as the event, I think it's a very heartfelt event, and I believe the information and the discussion is just the Board of Commissioners trying to make sure it's fair down the line for all. And I do believe you'll find that it's a very nominal fee, and if you have questions about that, I'd be glad to answer them personally, or the city manager or Ms. Jenny may be able to give you other companies that have assisted in, we have had rides, we've had walks, we've had five Ks, we've had different things, so they may be able to give you a direction of assistance versus you trying to figure it out tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is the city manager's items for discussion. Oh, I missed something. F, sorry, I missed something. Discuss and/or take action on the committee review of codes. Commissioner Sutton?
I'd like to see the board take recommendations for the board to review the codes, not codes department, but the codes themselves. And it's going to be a timing that thing, and it's going to be something that's, that I think, I feel like, I feel very strongly that we need to do. And I'd like to take some recommendations, or make the motion that we do that. The member of the boards, I'd like to see somebody, it's like see a city manager, someone from the planning commission, at least one or two from this board right here, and a couple from the public. We can get people that are contractors or for whatever, that we're having a problem with right now, it's sitting on, it'd be a sidebar-type situation. And once we get through that, give a monthly or quarterly report back to the board themselves to look at revamping some of the codes that we have. Some of them are antiquated, just, we know that, and codes departments are simply doing their job as they've been instructed to follow the codes, and it's causing a problem. I've gotten quite a few letters from business people in the community through the Chamber of Commerce, we ask them for comments and things, so I'd like to get an approval to go forward with setting up that board and taking any suggestions we may have of people that would want to be on that board. Or anybody on the board, on this board would like to be on the committee.
Second, you made a motion.
Motion for forming a committee for the reviewing of the city codes, and a second discussion, comments, nomination? Yeah.
Just a question for clarification. I thought in a previous meeting, and I didn't bring those minutes with me, but I thought in a previous meeting, we asked the city manager to ask the codes director to provide us with a list of those codes that were most frequently contested, for lack of a better term, I don't think that's how we worded it, but, and he was given 60 days to do that, and I don't think the 60 days has expired. Does anybody else recall that?
I think it has.
I do recall that, is this something added to?
Well, what I received from them was a list of everything that we require a fee for. Fee for, period. It was like 10 or 12 items that we require fees for, or permits for, let me add that to it also.
So you did get a response to that?
That's all I got. I didn't get any, what is this code, what is this for? That was all that I got.
Okay.
So I think we need to go further than that with it, and.
I understand that.
And not to pick on anything or anyone or anything, but we've got a lot.
I just wanted to make sure that we had set a deadline, that we hit the deadline and passed.
I'm pretty sure we already have been presented with something, so.
Are you volunteering as committee chair?
I would be glad to.
Is there anyone else on the Board of Commission that would be willing to volunteer for this committee at this time?
I'll do it, yeah.
And you did mention that city manager?
By being city manager over the codes department and previous experience as head of planning commission, I think it'd be enviable.
Mr. Wayne Hall, and then you mentioned having possibly a planning commission and citizens, how many do you feel the committee should have?
I would, we can have whatever you want to have on it, but it's going to be lengthy, so everybody's not going to show up every time, so to have an adequate number, I'd like to have at least two other people from the planning commission.
Okay.
And at least two, at least two citizens.
And two citizens.
Make seven.
All right. Anyone hear from the planning commission? All right, we'll solicit for the planning commission to ask for any nominees.
Can I add one more to that list?
Okay.
Someone from the chamber. We're dealing mainly with businesses and things like that, also, along with homeowners.
There's someone present, or would you like to present that to your board for a nominee or volunteer? Chamber people?
Did you say you? Raise your hand. I thought I sent you back there waiting.
Okay, while we're at it, is there any citizens current that would like to be on the board?
There's two, there's two right there.
Mr. Tim Mangrum and Ms. Henrietta Hall.
You do?
Nobody gave me directions, so this is how we're doing it this evening.
That sounds good to me, yeah.
Planning commission, don't see anyone, so we will solicit for those two and put together?
I will, and then I'll, we'll set a date for, have a meeting and get back with y'all with, as we have meetings.
Okay. All right, we had all, we're in discussion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you like this list, or give it to?
Yes, I would, or she can give it for me. If you can, get the addresses and stuff for me.
Okay, so we have Commissioner Sutton, Patty Carroll, Wayne Hall, Henrietta Hall. Are y'all writing? You wrote already? You're hitting me? Okay. And John Cherry?
Tim Mangrum.
And can I make a request to the city manager that we have codes director, Don Albon there, representation of codes?
Okay.
Is there a few city managers?
Codes committee. Didn't we pull together another committee we supposed to build up? Not tonight, but.
We've got to do something with the finance committee.
Yeah, okay, that's yet to come, that'll be on the next agenda, is Discuss Finance Oversight Committee. While I'm thinking about it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, that's how you get her done. All right, G, discuss and/or take action of ordinance 822.
Bill number 2013-27 is the ordinance to amend the City of Fairview, Tennessee Municipal Code Title 13, Property Maintenance Regs, Chapter 4, Tree Planting and Protection, Section 13-409, Community Tree Plan. Move for approval.
Second.
As discussion, I'll ask, when was the original, when was the original tree, set up a tree bank for the funding of tree placement on public-owned property? When was that concept originated? Can anyone share with me?
That's on the ordinance, Mayor. That shows the authority and.
Is that the 90, the bottom of the ordinance change?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that, that shows the history of it, if I, if I might just give you the thumbnail sketch to.
That's fine. I wasn't able to look up all the ordinances.
The original ordinance, as it's written on there, it says, as the ordinance presently stands, and says as it presently reads, the tree bank was included as a part of an appendix to be generated by the tree board and known as D2. From talking with Don, he was the one that asked for this, from talking with Don, apparently D2, the appendix contained, was to contain several items. Apparently, that never was generated. One of those items that was mentioned to be in D2 was a tree bank, which would allow for the, a place for the funds. When you have a development, you go out in a field and there's a whole bunch of trees. The footprint of that building, and I'll use Walmart as an example, the footprint of that building of necessity will not allow for the replacement of trees in the same number that was removed. And they have a, a formula that they set up, and has been around as part of the procedures of this ordinance, to calculate the value of a tree based on its caliper and some other things, but it comes up with a dollar value.
Okay. And who puts that together? Is that a state?
No, that was put together by, locally, Don has that. They were, that was put together by the tree board.
Larry, if I, if I could add, it's part of the package that's submitted by the company that's building on it. We, we give them the forms and they have to tell us how many trees and have to have a tree survey and what kinds of trees and how big the trees are, and then it's plugged into the formula and they present it along with a, a plan of how much they will need to pay to the tree bank or how many they plan to replant and which plant, which trees they try to replant. It's part of the landscaping plan.
So this appendix D2 has been in action since 97?
Well, that ordinance originally was.
See, there's no appendix in here. Where is that record at?
I don't think that appendix was ever generated. It was supposed to be generated by the tree board, and a part of that appendix, Don says he can't find it, a part of that appendix was this tree bank, a place to house the money that comes in from the trees that are removed, the calculation, the ones that you can't replace. In other words, if you replace it, you get credit for it. If you can't replace it on site, then you have to pay for it, based on the formula that the Commissioner Bussell was referring to. The, the, the appendix D2, I think is something that the tree board should come up with a recommendation and come up with the items that's supposed to be in D2 and, and present it to the board for approval. However, the Walmart thing brought this to, to the attention. They have a, a deposit that they're gonna have to make to the tree bank, and as the original ordinance now reads, and it says that those funds can only be used to replace trees at another site on property that's owned by the City of Fairview and for that purpose only, which, it makes sense, and that's, that's good, but what Don was saying is, I don't have any place to lodge these funds, and I says, well, let's do this. You can't come up with a D2 real quick. Let's amend the ordinance to just take the tree bank out, the tree bank funds out of that and make it a part of the ordinance so that it will go in and Ms. Crystal or her replacement can create a separate line item that's caused something to the effect of tree bank. And it has, it'll be a line item that's shown on the budget and it shows how much money's in there, and it can only be used to replace trees on property that belongs to the City of Fairview. And the second part of the ordinance says, as amended reads, and it's exactly the same as the original ordinance, except it moves out the tree bank funds from that D2 appendix and makes it a part of the ordinance that says it'll have a separate line item in the budget and those funds will only be used to replace trees on property that belongs to the City of Fairview. That's, that's what the ordinance does.
Okay, and my other question is, is it in this document or others that it says it pertains to commercial, industrial, residential, or what?
It.
This document doesn't say what it pertains to.
It, that's in the package that's given to the developer when they make the calculation. Any tree, any money that comes to the city as a result of trees that are removed and can't be replaced on site will be in that tree bank. And that's, that's what that ordinance told it creates is a tree bank.
Okay, so where does, I mean, I understand you give it to the developer, but where does the ordinance read it is for certain property? Because this is as if it would be for any property.
It's for any property.
So it's for residential, commercial, industrial, and farmland?
It's for any property that they, that they remove trees. When they ask for their building permit, then that, that building permit contains, those that, that are exempt won't get that particular part of the package.
Who is exempt? And where, does that read in the other ordinance?
I don't know, because that, that wasn't, that wasn't what was presented to me. It's presented as a place to put the tree bank money, but any money.
But if you're gonna collect money from someone, I guess I'm trying to see the track of where does it say it's for commercial or it's for industrial properties that this ordinance is being written for?
That is in, that is in what codes presents to them in the.
Development agreement.
The development agreement.
But it's part of the original.
If, if the tree bank is not part of your agreement.
In the ordinance that we're amending, Title 13, it says the type of property it addresses.
Commercial, I bet it does. I bet it says commercial development.
I, I don't think that ordinance mentions commercial property.
I'm asking if the one that it's amending says it, then that's okay, but if the one that's amending doesn't say it, and then we're speaking again, wouldn't it be where we would put what type of property this affects for the tree bank?
That particular section doesn't say that.
If I could, I could add, this is, this is a, a part of a series of ordinances. The original orders, the ordinance that establishes the need to replace the trees or put money in the tree bank is, is for commercial development. And so, and that's how, and it, it's not in this particular segment of it, but it is an ordinance that says if you are going to do a commercial development, you must submit this tree density plan, you must do this replacement plan, that sort of thing. What has happened ironically is, and, and I haven't been on the tree board in quite a while, but we never had anybody that couldn't replace the trees. And now with Walmart and potential other large developers, and I don't, I don't remember, I think it was 2,000 trees that Walmart cut down, something to that effect, with, there's now, they're not going to be able to replace, so, uh-oh, these people are gonna start writing us checks, and we don't have any place to put the money and/or anywhere, any mechanism for taking the money, buying trees, and planting them in the city. And that's what this does. It, it, it actually, we never, the tree board, at least when I was on it, never got around to dealing with, what are you gonna do with the money? Because.
Nobody ever wrote a check.
When Tractor Supply came in and cleared a little land, they just put enough trees up there to compensate what they cut down. We're now getting big developers, developments that can't do that, and that's, that's what this does. But there is a separate ordinance, I guess, I'm trying to answer your question. There's a separate ordinance that says, this is what you have, if you meet these qualifications, this is what you have to do.
Right.
And it does not apply.
So the type of property.
It does not apply to residential property. It does not apply to every.
Farmland.
And being, being on the tree board, I'm, I'm very abreast of what we've done this and why we've done this, and I guess my only other question is, was this started in 1997? And this is the first time that this is?
I wasn't here in 1997, so I couldn't answer that question, but according to the history of the ordinance, it was first in some form presented in 1997. Now, whether it had provisions for D2, et cetera, et cetera, I do not know because I wasn't here.
I'll look into the ordinance. I just didn't have time.
But I can tell you this, the, Chapter 13 has several sections. That's just one of them. That particular section doesn't mention what type property. Section 13 does mention that the section's property, and that's just one of those. That's, I think, what, 13409 or something? There's, there's several sections in, in, in Chapter 13, and it does tell what property is, that it applies to, although it doesn't say it on that one, but the previous sections did.
Okay, just needed clarification, and there's five other ordinance, and just received this yesterday, so I'll be studying on it and make sure I fully understand it.
The five other ordinances were previous revisions of that ordinance. If you want to get what property it applies to, you need to look in the municipal code, Chapter 13, because it does say it in there.
Okay.
Mary, if I could ask two questions on.
Yes, sir.
When the ordinance, we're looking at, like I said, this is the first time we're gonna be collecting money, and the last thing I talked to Don about, it's gonna be somewhere around 96, 98,000 dollars.
98,000 is what I heard.
Uh, because they just can't replace too many trees, as we took from that land back there in the back. And the question that I had on, on this ordinance, or do we need to make sure that we can do this? I'd like for us to be able to take the money, or some of the money, and incorporate it into in-kind parts of 50/50 grants, Greenway grants, whatever the case may be, because it will be on city property.
You can use that money, according to this ordinance, and you can use that money to replace any trees on any property that belongs to the City of Fairview. But it has to have, for tracking purposes, it has to have its own place in, in a line item in the budget, and that's what this does, so you can track the money. And any trees that you want to buy that doesn't violate some other ordinance, or some state statute that says you can't do this because it's one of those vegetation eating trees that takes over everything, but.
Right, but I mean, if we want to make.
Thotic evasives.
Right.
If we want to do a beautification process down there and we're gonna clear some trees out, we could use that to replace those trees.
You can use it to replace the trees. You couldn't do it to do the grading and exclamation.
No, but if, if the trees were 25% of 100,000 budget, then we could use 25,000.
You can use that to place it on any property that belongs to the City of Fairview. You couldn't do it to replace it on property that belongs to the state.
I see.
And?
If I may, I spoke with Don about this two days ago, I believe it was, and when he told me that it needed to be earmarked for a specific purpose, I suggested that it need to be in an ordinance in order for our auditors and me to make a special reserve account. So you'll see it in the budget only the years that we either take in money or spend out money. Otherwise, it'll be in a reserve account like the, the park reserve or the unassigned reserve.
Or drug fund or whatever.
Or the drug fund.
But you could find the money if somebody said how much is in the tree bank reserve account.
And if it's in an ordinance, it's guaranteed that that's what's gonna happen to it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you for letting me give you a thumbnail sketch of what's there.
You're welcome. Thank you for your clarity, and I believe I'm back. City manager, items of updates.
Thank you for your support, Commissioner. Uh, just I apologize for being on here at the workshop, my wife, I'm so busy today, and I still left her home pretty heavy today to give you a visit, so I apologize for that.
Hope she has a speedy recovery.
I have a big bear remiss and I'd like to wish Lisa and Crystal good luck in their future endeavors.
Thank you, Sarah. Miscellaneous updates. Girls first.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad you brought up the finance committee earlier, because I was going to ask about that in my presentation of the financials. I do have the October financials, which my understanding is going forward once the finance committee is. Them, and then they will present to the board, if I understood that correctly, so that I can guide my replacement correctly.
That was, I believe, how we were directed. We'll discuss that further for the next presentation.
All right, thank you. Well, October revenues, we should be at a target number of 33.33%. As you can see, sales tax for the county and local are slightly behind plan. If you take out the projected revenue for the new business, they would be at 27.21%, which is still roughly $80,000 behind plan, so between the two categories. So they will need to be watched very closely as we move forward. The holiday time does increase our sales tax slightly, so we could see that, that correct itself in the next couple of months, but it does need to be closely monitored. Our property taxes, of course, are not coming in yet. They will be, they are slowly trickling in, but the majority of them will come in the last couple of weeks of December. And then business taxes on a quarterly basis, so, or, I'm sorry, not a quarterly basis, it's based on their ending timeframe, and the majority of them end, I believe it's February? In February, so you should see a big jump in that April or May timeframe. For the expenses for October, again, we should be at 33.33%. Our items that causes to go over in general and admin are the, the things that we have to pay upfront. We have paid over $100,000 in our property and liability insurance. Our data processing is paid in full upfront. That category also has all of our medical expenses and, so it calls, we have too many expenses in that category that are upfront, so it's hard to watch that one and keep it on target in the very beginning because of the, the upfront full payments. The park fund is also one that is higher right now. Part of that is the $21,000 that was discussed in the workshop that needs to decide where the budget amendment is gonna come from, so it's taking up money in the park fund, making it look like they've overspent. They've also, they, the park fund houses the, both of the Fourth of July and the Haunted Forest expenses, so they are both at 100% because both, both events have taken place, so that makes their number jump up right now. But overall, we're at 35.74%, which is slightly ahead of plan. Again, it's, it's hard to tell just how off we are because of the, the items that have to be paid upfront. So we should maybe see a little better picture at the end of December of where we're really at, because that's halfway through. Does, anybody have any questions? I did email this to you. I apologize that it was just today, but I used it as a learning experience as well.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Sales tax during the year next year. And I know we budgeted a very small amount for that, so that we'd make sure we wouldn't go over too much. What I want to ask the city manager to do while you're still here is look at some way for us to possibly track those increases and possibly have those put aside in a reserve to pay down just the debt that we have now, because we've got payments that are not due for a year or whatever, fire trucks, police cars, everything is. Because there's no need in spending it for something else if that's what we're gonna use it for.
Do you mean a special reserve, or would you like just to see the unrestricted reserve?
I don't want to have to lock it up forever, but I want to make sure that it's set aside somewhere so we don't spend it for something else and not pay off the debt, that it's there. I mean, it's there because we put it there, and I'm all for that, but.
Excuse me.
I, I, we anticipate a lot more than what we're gonna. I talked to the mayor of Spring Hill today, and there, there, there are new numbers that are coming in far exceed their expectations, and he was shocked. I had told him before what we did, and he was still shocked as far as setting a reserve back, so just, just to look at that. I don't want it to just be dumped in there. I want it to be earmarked if we discuss this in the next meeting, to do that with.
Okay. Any, any revenues that exceeds expenditures will automatically go in the unrestricted account at the end of the year, but.
But I want to make sure that they're not spent for something else in the meantime.
I understand.
And I believe next meeting, as we form our finance committee, that could be something of a first focus and recommendation as we go forward. I do agree, and just to add, I did visit with the manager of Walmart, and he did say they are projecting 42 million.
Yeah.
I don't know what that equates, equates to, but that's a pretty healthy.
We get 1.625% of that, of their sales tax portion, I'm sorry.
They're being, they're being very conservative with that figure, I assure you.
And they are discussing, while we're on that, they are discussing a grand opening January 15.
I did see the sign go up yesterday.
Okay. Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments to Ms. Puet?
I just want to thank you for everything you've done. I know I have called you and bugged you and taken most of your ink pens since you've been here.
All of my ink pens.
And I take all of them.
Thank you.
But I thank you for the job you're doing, wish you the most success in, in what you're gonna do.
Thank you. Okay, other reports, staff reports? City attorney comments?
Thank you, Mayor. My comments tonight will be, I guess, somewhat rambling. I'll try to be clear, but there's several things I wanted to cover with the board. First, as a request of Commissioner Sutton, if he would, when the meeting's over, please see Mr. Teresa. We need to get you to sign some documents as chairman of the beer board, so we can clear out that last pending case that we have that had the court action pending. The next thing is.
You already set, you already set a date for that, right?
The dates, the dates are there, but you need to, yes, you need to sign them for the notification. Second thing is, I'm glad to see my good friend Commissioner Johnson's up and walking around again. I know how it feels not to be able to walk when you want to and go where you want to, and I'm glad to see you're doing well. The next thing is that I was speaking with the city manager of the day, Mr. Hall, and it's kind of funny who you, it wasn't funny what he told me, but he said that Ms. Teresa and Ms. Crystal was both leaving and told them when they were leaving, and I says, well, is there any way that, that you can refuse to accept their resignation? And he said, well, I don't know, and I says, well, let me answer that question for you. That would be involuntary servitude, and we can't do that, but if we could keep them, I'd, I'd like to see them stay. It's been a pleasure for me to work with Ms. Teresa and Ms. Crystal. Sometimes I say, work with, sometimes I felt like maybe I was working for them. They made my job easier. They were always. They were always very well-informed as to what they were, what they were wanting to do and where they were trying to get to. And if I could be some help to them in getting there, I'm, I'm glad I was, was able to do that. You'll always find that, that I'm a little slow to, to recommend anything that I think would be detrimental to this city. And I can assure you that those two people were very dedicated and at no time did I ever get any indication that they would do anything other than what was the best for this city. And it was, it was an honor to work with them and I wish them well. The last thing that I have is, I want to wish this board and the citizens and all the staff a happy Thanksgiving. Be safe and we hope to see you after Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Communications from the commissioners. Commissioner Carroll.
Oh, wow. Hello. I don't think I've ever been first.
Girls first.
Um, first of all, I'd just like to clarify that tonight, when I voted for the cameras and I didn't when we do, did it, I am not for alone and I really didn't want the twelve cars, but all at once. I know they need them. But sometimes it just comes down to, we've already passed the cars, the majority ruled, they're going to need safety equipment. So I'd just like to clarify that for any citizens that we're watching, because I haven't changed my mind on any of it. It's just, you know, sometimes you've got to use a little common sense and say that we need to do what we need to do. So with that said, I would like to give my thanks to both Crystal and Teresa for everything you've done and appreciate all your hard work. And I'm not so sure that I'm still really wanting to go in your suitcase and move to Florida, if that would be okay. But you'd probably send me right back. But anyway, and thank you for, you know, Mr. Hall, I know you've had a lot on your plate in the first, I don't know, how long have you been here? Has it even been 30 days?
Four weeks.
It's been a long, long four weeks. But welcome all the new employees here. It's, you know, I know you're going to have some great guidance and leadership and y'all better get them trained because we don't have a lot of time, so. And welcome. So, and then happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Commissioner Basel.
Thank you, Mayor. At the risk of sounding redundant, to Crystal and Teresa, it's been my privilege and I wish you the best. Tom and Brandy and Susan, I guess she left, welcome. And if I can be of assistance, please let me know. We're welcome to the family and wish you the best. And happy Thanksgiving. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, just for, I asked the mayor, I hope, come out to the ballgame. I know it's going to be probably raining and cold and whatever, but I know that the, I talked to some people up at the high school and they were really disappointed in the turnout to the playoff game. So it's CPA this week. And I know we have some sign ordinances and stuff, but you know what? I think we need to throw up some signs and support the community and so, I don't know, I didn't say that even though it was on TV, but sometimes, sometimes we just got to use some common sense and let's support our hometown. I mean, this is a big deal, third round of playoffs. So maybe we can come up with some ways that we can help or put something out at City Hall to show our support. It's a little late, but maybe we can, maybe y'all tomorrow during your training can draw some.
Maybe I'll chant my team.
Yep. There you go. So.
Thank you. Commissioner Sutton.
I've already thanked Crystal. I'm not going to do it again. No. Crystal, to me, it's the second most important job within the city, right underneath the city manager. Teresa, you're in there right there with it. And I know I've called you and bugged you and you will know why I'm not in my office at 4:30 in the afternoon. So I'll call you back at 6:15 in off, in the morning from my office and want to know where you're at. But I thank both of you for all the job, all the hard work you've done. I know that we're not easy to deal with and we put a lot of pressure on you to get things done, confusing at times, but y'all have done a great job. I'd like to thank Wayne Hall. That was, you, you actually took two of the top people in as far as administration goes and replaced him and added one more that we've asked for at the same time. And so through some diligent interviews that you went through with him, so I really appreciate that. Ms. Humphrey, you have all my support. This is an atrocious event that happened out there. Should never happen to any animal. I'm going to work diligently with you, with all of you to help resolve this and raise some money for some reward because that individual needs to be punished, period. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and remember why you're thankful for everything, all the blessings that we have goes forward. I, I remiss if I didn't mention this, there's a young man that died this past week that was 40 years old. He had a lot of connections here in Fairview. I coached him in T-ball when he was six and he died completely unexpectedly. So keep in mind and be thankful and have your thoughts with, we could lose anyone at any time. So thank you. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you. President Johnson.
Well, I get to go almost last, so I don't guess I'll repeat everything again, but happy Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Okay, here you go.
And I'd like to just kind of ditto. Thank you for your attention. Thank you for your diligence and thank you for your servant, servant hood to the city. Ms. Teresa and Ms. Crystal, you have gone beyond, above and beyond, and we thank you for not only your commitment, but your passion. And we do wish you the best. Welcome to our new people. Welcome aboard. And we look forward to a future of leading the city in the best way that we know how. And I will say happy Thanksgiving to you and yours and your family. But before I end, I want to comment on a recommendation, and I'm not real sure if this was supposed to be on the agenda, discussed or discussed at this time. But it spoke of the Planning Commission voted unanimous to advertise for applications for the vacant seat of the Planning Commission on the resignation of Mr. Wayne Hall. And my question to staff, is this being done or do we need to make suggestion to get it done? Then with it not being on the agenda, it being recommended from the Planning Commission, how should we move forward?
Well, it was recommended from the Planning Commission and it really technically should be a situation that the board says this is a recommendation and the whole board recommends. But if the board wants to get an early start, you can just suggest that they do it and then you can put it on your next agenda to make it formal.
Okay. What are the wishes of the board?
I'd like to make a recommendation to ask city manager to move forward with publications of, of job applications for some available seats.
And having this on the next agenda, please, so we can address it formally and possibly have applications where we can move forward with the appointment as well. Any other comments from the board?
We should have several on file already. And I know another one coming in this week, so.
No, we're not voting. Recommending.
Just put it on the next agenda.
So we'll solicit and then talk about it on the next agenda. Any other comments?
It doesn't expend, you know, it doesn't expend any funds, so you can make the suggestion that they go ahead and start doing it and then you can formalize it at the next meeting.
So be none-
Wouldn't do that on normal stuff.
Be none other, I look for a motion for adjournment.
Please, Karen.
Second?[1792.04]